I've seen somebody, some people on Facebook saying stuff. But that's about it. Okay. That's good. That's good. Same handsome guy? I don't tell, I don't tell many people that. Stay.
This last time.
All right, time to go into this to work. The village meeting at first meeting on Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty five. And as you were starting standing, no.
Do I?
As you were starting standing, you might not be able to say anything.
We'll do the invitation and huddle.
Okay, kids. Message feedback of kids. May the Lord bless you with his riches, all his grace, the treasures of his love, the comfort of his mercies, strength of his presence, and the touch of his care. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are anti-accident coverage, but that was like, read now. Uh, well, uh, Mayor's opening script for you guys. Um, may you all be attending to our regular scheduled city council meeting for June twenty twenty six. If any member of the community in the audience desires to speak on any item listed for action on the agenda, please complete the comments registration card located on the table at the back of the room and submit it to the city count, or say city manager or clerk. And now we are pushing forward. And our next action item is the approval of consent agenda. I will, um, take a motion to approve that unless anyone has any questions. So we won't get a chance to read over that very long list.
I'm in that place.
Over annual renewals.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to read the proclamation?
Oh, yeah, we can totally do that.
Yeah.
I don't think so. You have a.
He has, he not got.
You have a proclamation.
Got the George state, got the G and L.
All right, so one of the things on the, uh, consent agenda is the proclamation celebrating pride. So I will read that now. Whereas pride celebrates that all people are welcome and included in the city of the village. All people are equal, all people are valued, and all people are loved. And that personal freedom is alive well in our community. And whereas since the nineteen eighties, local organizations have celebrated pride in our community and whereas pride has been recognized and celebrated in our community and is now lifted up across the city each year throughout the month of June by institutions, individuals, businesses, and other districts. And whereas the official proclamation of the pride, of pride in the village reminds us that even though bigotry against LGBTQ plus residents still exists, such bigotry is not publicly opposed by a city government that belongs to all residents of this, of our community. And whereas the LGBTQ plus community of the city of the village is the pride of our friends, neighbors, and family members and is an indispensable part of the vibrant and diverse culture of our community. And whereas the city of the village remains committed to protecting the rights of LGBTQ plus residents, fostering a culture of diversity and inclusion, and ensuring equal equality for LGBTQ plus residents of our community. Now therefore, I, John Allen, Mayor of the City of the Village, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty five as pride month in the city of the village and encourage residents to welcome and celebrate contributions of our city's LGBTQ plus community. Give it the hand and seal the pledge the ninth day of June twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
You read one more.
I'll read it backwards, how's that?
I appreciate you doing that, and I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second? My second.
Motion by Braxton, second by Bubba, called Roll Braxton.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes five to zero.
Right, moving right along. Item number four, consideration of resolution zero six zero nine twenty twenty five G, approving grant positions agreement with Oklahoma County for radios and digital technology assets with village police department.
If you remember last month, we did this for the fire department. Uh, police department proposed it today after last month's meeting. So it's a new thing, uh, Oklahoma County through some of their art funding, emergency management, package for radios and digital assets. Uh, this gets us on the same frequency as Oklahoma City.
Perfect. Right, I'm going to watch it. Right.
Do I hear a second?
Second. Motion by Braxton, second by Keith. Braxton.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right. Agenda item number five, consideration of resolution zero six zero nine twenty twenty five A regarding lot split for three, one, one, two Kent drive.
Just came from the plan and zoning with the recommendation to approve by the council. Can we want to recap what you presented, Kenzie?
Just a recap of what I saw. Yes, sir. Uh, basically, there's both lots split for three thousand, or three, one, twelve Kent drive. Um, the lot split is basically going to be split into two. They want to see the final residential lots. Uh, one lot eleven thousand five hundred twenty-three square feet, the other lot twelve thousand six hundred sixty-six square feet, uh, about seventy-one feet wide. Uh, section point four, minus one, fifty-five, six, and seven, the city code requires the minimum lots, uh, block width of fifty feet, which we both have, and minimum residential lot size of seventy-two hundred square feet. Both lots satisfy this code. Uh, intended purpose is to split, construct one residential structure per lot. Uh, on review, uh, code department found no issues. Uh, presented this before by the zoning and five thirty, and they recommended it five.
Yeah. Any questions?
Sounds good. Wait, there's two cars coming down my street. I, I, I don't want to have to value it when I'm looking for it. When I drove by the little, let's go right up to your street right now. Gosh, we're chasing like, they're going, they're coming up the hill. Um, I, I drove up here today just to get this, um, I wanted to make sure I could do it. You know, all about, it's a gigantic house, perfect for a lot split. And, uh, when we were talking to some of the folks involved, was saying the prices of the two homes we draw are incredibly high and good for, you know. Plus, if we find somebody that hasn't been, that, that, they're, they're a worker, not quite as shoddy, it's on the problem. It's my field, we did, we did. But Bruce, no kidding, you do a great job, you always have in the village. How long, how long have you been with us? You've been here for a long, as long as I have.
Uh, thirty years in May, we've lived here. Yeah.
And everyone else knows that, uh, Bruce and Kim lived in the village, said it back down in one of their homes. They had a little bit of a lake. Before that, they lived over in one of their developments, little election. They've always lived in the village, and we appreciate that too. Because I always say something, because I want to get a house to talk to Bruce. I'll call the city man. So anyway.
Well, you, you do amazing work, you bring a lot of, uh, sorry. We appreciate that.
We're looking forward to you doing that new shopping shit.
When do you expect to start?
Um, we'll be calling Midwest shopping tomorrow.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so as soon as we get off this.
We don't play no games, not like that.
I will say that it really, and I don't know why. Hundreds of cars coming out of the street all the time. You might just take a look at it, make sure that everybody's, you know, parking as best they can and that kind of thing. But I thought I started like a count one time, but there's so many, my counter stuff.
Maybe we need to do a traffic study.
Or maybe we need.
Okay, we're getting on topic.
Really, well, I may go to a group.
Wait, 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 what, what, how, uh, what do you think we're able to sell?
It really depends, half the houses we build are custom and half of them are spec houses. So again, you know, we might sell it as custom and then you dump that. There's, there's houses, another house sold on K and X sold to Guy Law, and he just sold the apartment in three, five, three hundred and sixty-five foot.
Yeah.
So that's kind of on this end of things. Um, but in the seven fifty to nine hundred is, is probably what those will sell for.
That's great.
We just build it.
Have you sold the lots yet?
No.
Or are you getting ready?
Yeah, we could sell it.
We want to wait until.
Before this, yeah.
Okay.
Everything is done.
Yeah, yeah, but no, we haven't sold it yet. Haven't put a sign on the yard or done anything at all.
Right, I'm excited to see what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Right. Roll Bubba.
Good.
Braxton.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes five to zero, and then, and then we have, so we're breaking Peter. Can live around the corner today, and I'll, the customer themselves know you, but you've been around a long time.
Former, former planning, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we grew a lot.
You got all the village people here doing the work, and we appreciate it.
All right, move on to the item number six. Consideration of the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters of thirty-five ninety-eight fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Okay, and we, uh, I have a local, we'll take action on this tomorrow. We definitely do tonight. Those changes that we have, uh, monetary is we are going to pay overtime for holdover and callback, and this has a three point two five percent wage increase in it. Um, revenues are kind of flat for this year, our budget's kind of flat. So we're going to see how this year goes, and I commit to them. If we're having a good year, we'll do a big year assessment, and I might come back and ask you for additional wage increase. Uh, our cost of living, the three point two five percent is a little bit above what the, uh, the BLS CPI was. I raised it to two point three, two point eight, so we're over that. I'm just kind of a little hesitant with the, I think the economy's going to get back on track, but revenues are just kind of flat this year, projecting budget, as we're staying at. So we come back and clean up some boundaries on promotions. Uh, really did a great negotiation process with the local, uh, they were very good to work with. They just want the money, they want even more money, but, um, we're pretty set for capital improvements, to get the rescue apparatus, squad apparatus, things pretty good now.
Are those on the verdict?
No, not yet, we're, that was John first.
Oh. Yeah, great.
And everything for the budget was, was, everything was from this plan in the budget.
Okay, that's, okay, my question, awesome. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Braxton, second by David. Braxton.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes five to zero.
Moving on to item number seven is the consideration of the bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge three two 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 for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Thank you, again, negotiations went very well, this includes a three point two five percent cost of living increase. Uh, what I've said on the fire side, I didn't do your assessment, come back, I'll watch this as well. We also adjust for shift differential paid, uh, from fifty dollars to seventy-five dollars per second shift, and from a hundred a month to a hundred and fifty a month for third shift. So the night, the evening shift, the night shift, have a shift differential. Those numbers have been idle for quite a while, so we need to adjust for those.
Right, and with, uh, with our police and their, their work on the off-duty security, is there, is there a limit to the off-duty security anymore? To make sure they're not working on ninety hours a week, and then when they're with us, they're.
We have no control level, they're not in duty capacity. However, if they're working ninety hours a week, you try to work for us, we generally performance, we're going to issue to come up with.
Okay.
So you got that showing that's not, not controlled by us.
So against that, is there a security? Okay. I'll make a motion.
Questions are, they're all, they're here.
Motion by Braxton, second by Keith. Call roll Braxton.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
David.
Yay.
Bubba.
Yeah.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, item number eight, consideration of resolution zero six zero nine twenty twenty five H, updating the schedule of service charges for sewer and sanitation fees.
Yes, sir, this is what we discussed over the ninety-eighth meeting, there's no change on that. Uh, this will bring the monthly increase, uh, up five dollars, five dollars and cents. It is an eighty-four dollar a year increase, uh, increases in sanitation. Uh, it last occurred in twenty sixteen for residential and, uh, twenty ten for commercial. So we are costing, and a cost increase of eighty-four dollars per year. Um, I think we would have done this every year, probably would have been more than that. Um, so it's an eighty-four dollar cost increase per household, uh, and that's the annual cost. And our cost of increase is.
So what's the change in the past ten years? So what will that make to your, to your month daily? Cause it's sixty-five right now, right?
Seventy-nine.
Yes. So it'll be seven dollars, fourteen dollars more every.
Fourteen more dollars on the, okay.
It was trying to have that.
Yeah.
Eighty-four dollars, twelve, seven, eleven, two, so it'll be fourteen dollars more. Or seven dollars a month, or eighty-four dollars. Uh, this is still cheaper now in the city, so in the city, it's right, uh, in November, it was up to twenty-eight sixty-three per month. That is just for the one poly cart and one recycling cart. Resident, we've got two trash carts and one recycling bin, additional carts either, or we see this already, fifty cents a month.
And we are, are they tracking those carts? Like, if somebody currently has like four or five carts, let's say, will they, maybe, and they're not paying, will they make a note of that now? That to your bill later, or how are they going to?
We will be doing an audit, they're doing a real audit for us, and how much work it is, to figure out how this people know who's, they've, they've someone that they've had a condition card.
Yeah.
And this will still include the, you know, the four downs, that, uh, at the, yes, up to here.
Is that, is one change?
Thank you. Does anybody have anything they want to say in regards to sewer sanitation fee increases?
Yes.
So if you, if you have something to say, if I haven't stepped up to the mic.
Yeah, please.
And then add your name. That would be, would be wonderful.
Karen Bernardi.
Hi, Karen.
Hi, I'm too long, and, um, she said.
Well, Keith's going to turn your mind on.
Um, okay, to clarify, those of us who are on a budget. So the cost per month, that, you know, that, that, uh, is challenging. So the monthly charge will be.
Will increase seven dollars a month.
And so I'm now sixty-five.
Right.
Okay.
So sixty-five is, sixty-five is every two months.
Sixty-five is every two months.
Okay.
Right. So it will be sixty-five plus fourteen, seventy.
Seventy-nine.
Or is that right?
Okay, seventy-nine every two months, okay. Yes.
So that's a significant increase.
Yeah, not a significant. And I know the big trash pickup came today, and it, yeah, just got the truck, thanked them, and, and. Um, that was just, the letter read eighty-four dollars a year.
Free, it was free. It was the simplest way to, you know, because whether it's a monthly, you know, it's a weekly service, we bill five monthly. So the eighty-dollar a year, and it had not increased in over ten years, so.
Here's what.
Thank you.
And what's the light charge?
It's a percentage.
I tried to, yes, but I appreciate having that box.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. All right. Good to see you. Any other questions on that? Comments, questions, or the council?
So that will be the total of that.
Yeah, yeah, so this is second, I think, in case you fall over in the section. Right, that is for sewer, trash, and MSA, seven dollars, increase eighty-four dollars.
And do you know, like, how often does Oklahoma City, that theirs out to the head?
Their what?
Their, their trash.
They do, they do residential sanitation, and they do not do commercial sanitation.
They don't at all, so they do residential, that's managed by waste management.
Uh, city of Oklahoma City saw one of those, you know, put in those, their residential classes. They don't commercial, commercial, just that they're just.
Right. And was there was a provision in this that it increases every year, every two years, or has the?
For session four is the current contract, uh, waste connections can go up to a maximum of two percent.
A year?
If the CPI is two percent, if the CPI is five percent, that can't go higher than two. Uh, so for session four is to automatically implement that into the building cycle in July, so we don't go another decade without a new rate increase.
So.
I'm asking the rates.
When their rate, when our cost goes up, our cost to our customer goes up, there's no additional profit margin.
Okay. How often have you seen waste connections raise their prices?
The past ten years, it was, I think there were two years where there was no increase.
But only two out of ten?
Yeah. But I mean, there's also where you had CPIs of three, average of three, three point five a year over the past decade, and we only have two percent.
Okay.
Most contracts have, for services like that, give a automatic rider in there for the CPI. Uh, because we're dense, we're having a lot of customers, we're two and a half square miles. We're going to negotiate to keep the two percent, and that was, I think Bruce Stunt started that from years ago with those connections. So we're, and so like, our customers aren't impacted by annual CPI increases as much as neighbors.
Okay. Do you know, like, how often that would, would that, I don't know, can you project or, or, or think, like, how much is that going to continue to increase over the next ten years?
Well.
Cause I know we're locked in for.
I've been down there too, but I've taken twenty-eight dollars, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Plus hundreds due, shouldn't?
Yeah.
Ten times in.
Yeah, wherever that, I can't do math about it.
Eight. Oh, I know. So I work with pressure.
Now, two percent on seventy-nine dollars would be seventy.
But it's not seventy-nine dollars, it's just on the same.
It's just on sale, we'd be less than that, we've got seventy-nine cents on that, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
It would be less than, probably not fifty cents.
And next year might be fifty-six. So it's not going to be drastic increase, and if the CPI stays below two, you know, CPI reaches one point seven percent, one point seven percent is our increase.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and you know, like you said, it's probably needed to happen. Yes, ma'am. This is in regards to garbage.
I, I mean, it's just, this poses the question, are renters, people that rent homes, they pay that fee?
Usually they probably would pay it. Way more would pay it.
I don't have an account, but they probably pay it in.
Yeah.
Are they pretty consistent in paying that?
Yeah, I don't know, we have very many houses that are.
Yeah.
What we have is a cart that someone, you know, ends up on the street, which the neighbor moves down. They all have serial number on them, but, um, it's, we pull the carts whenever someone moves or vacates, and then we bring them, and then we restore them, services are initiated. And we require property owners, the owner to pay. We also do not require deposit, um, so I think that kind of helps with having to be the property owner.
Okay.
Cause the property owner, if the renters gets down, and it loses water bill and electric bill, the property owners go back and see.
We have had more renters, more people renting, and I, I was curious as to who was responsible for that. Do people move out, and there's a pile of.
And we look at doing a credit for people who pay annually, that pay once a year. Our current software doesn't let us do that. When we get a new software, we should be able to do that, so we look at offering that, and that's the customers in the near future.
And I live on Sunday as well, Bruce, you know, and so I sleep, and I walk, and I sleep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Were you the one that raises all the plans?
Pardon?
Were you the one that raises all the plans?
Raises on the, that's more.
Well.
On the fourth street, I'm not from the village, and I, that, something that was just a, I didn't know who was responsible for that. I'm like, um, forty-one years.
It was, it was so many years, and we've all kind of got together and, and was requesting that we check on the, uh, folks that, uh, rent houses, the owners and stuff like that, and see if everything is right, up to snuff on, on what they need to be paying for, or when people skip out, that, that, we could lose the, you know, the, the money that needs to come to us, and then you're forced to know what a home should pay for. So I think maybe it's time that we, if we ever look at all this again, just to see how the owners will, uh, just pay, you know, in their properties, you know, they're keeping them up and that kind of stuff. There's so much going on in the village and all of our stuff. As you can see, you know, there's so much going on, but we need to take a step back and look at it. I've had some people complain, uh, some brands, there's kids that have rented in the village, and the, the owner would not take care of the things that need to be taken care of that should be coven. You know, so we probably need to step back and take a look at that. What, forty percent of our homes here are rented?
Oh, okay.
I didn't, that's why. I thought it was, I thought it was about third. Yeah. You still, you know, change the lots up now? We'll, we'll get it.
And there's potential for the village. I've just always thought I had people that rent, and that's, they're, what they do, but I, I just think there just needs to be some counter.
Yeah, well, there should be, again, it's Bruce has to keep, keep track of it, and we can prove your track. I know that if anything really stands out, that, uh, Bruce is on top of it, and she'll tell us, but we just need to go back and look at some stuff, you know.
Well, that is a good sign, but thank you, guys.
That makes a good sound, I hear. To anyone who, uh, make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
Bubba, second by David.
Yay.
James.
Yay.
Braxton.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passes four to one.
Moving on to item number nine, consideration of the resolution zero six zero nine twenty twenty five A, updating the annual service fee. This is part of our.
Yes, sir, you have a, you have a service fee, seventy-five cents a month, which is included in that seven dollar jump.
Yeah.
You know, and speed is a separate part of code with sanitation and sewer, so that's what you have to buy.
Do you know, like, how many people use that?
I know there are several people on my streets using this.
It's just very.
Like eighty months a month.
Yeah.
Probably say close to a hundred, um, cause a significant portion of those are from, like, here, but.
All right.
But here's, here's the thing. Now, yeah, we have to have a service, and when we, when we took this on so many years ago, there was, you know, we didn't have a choice. And we still really don't have a choice, you know, that's less, that's more, a lot of it's more expensive if you want to go outside. It would benefit, you know, this has worked for a long time, but it's just hard to pin, pin somebody down and make sure that we get the best price and the best price we want to get. And so we're all, the villagers cover, that's the good thing. We all have our stats and what the runs are, you know, for seven minutes or eight minutes. Our, our village, our department's there at three minutes, you know, so, you know, we're, I am doing the best we can do.
So this is like whatever, like, it's kind of, I think insurance, but like, a resident has to use MSA, they're covered. You just don't have to pay the annual out. I saw it, but I remember with the village, thinking that was great, because it's optional, but on the city, that's where we just include it.
Yeah, everybody in the village just kind of, that's the point. Yeah, everybody in the village just kind of, that's pretty important. And I don't think a lot of people know that, you know, so that's, that's weird.
I don't think I know that much, okay, I'll go second.
Motion by Rex, David, Rexson.
Yay.
David.
Yeah.
Bubba.
Yeah.
Keith.
Yeah.
John.
Yay.
Motion passed 52.
Item number 10, consideration of software service agreement, Tyler Technologies, utility building and financial operations.
So I have other options that they have once a year on YouTube.
You know, we had started planning to treat the fall, but I think that was the thing that came up was uh, automation improvement, technology improvement, um, our software we've been using, it's highly dysfunctional, uh, it's hard to get support on it.
It's around like those 31.
I think, I think we need like the nation, cost nation's printer.
Yeah.
So, um, you got, Tyler Technologies is probably has about 70% of the local government market, um, for software solutions in a lot of your big cities, I admit, everyone says such have their own product they use. Tyler is not the cheapest, but they're the best software. They're easy to use, they update well, support, quality training is good. Sydney Turner made a few suggestions for the contractor, they sent us, we just wanted to hear back. Tyler, I don't think those will make any issue at all. I tried to come down to our cost assessment page here. Our court software is already on Tyler, so this will put all of our finance accounts payable, um, utility building, payroll, HR, in court in the sentence.
Can I go hang up?
That, that is a possibility, but it's certainly not the fully out.
Will this be a, um, for us?
This will be a cloud title, it's a web base, um. Yeah, I don't want to get the sticker shot on it, but this is what we budgeted, we discussed this, and this is the path forward for us. I think that's your pages here.
You know, it's way bigger than that. We've neglected this for a lot of years, you know, and it's mainly because of the budgeting, we always want to, you know, take care of our police and our sewer, sewer, our, you know, engineers, everybody else. But it's time we took care of the home office here, we takes care of everybody and they're, you know, these folks are just working, working themselves to death. An upgrade like this is going to really help us out, let them out, we'll make life easier, you know. I just think it's time, and I'm really glad that we, they really took a big look at this and decided this is the best thing for us and I'm really happy to give it to them if we can. And I know we, I know we will, you know, like I said, we're taking care of everybody else, it's now time to take care of the, of the city buildings and the whole.
Our current software is 20 years old.
Yeah. Oh, we should have loaded there. The fact that your software is still working.
Yeah.
I don't know that I've ever heard of this software last couple. No, the integration with the court system and payments and things, that's going to be a major improvement. Maybe we should start using the towers.
Yeah, I'm giving you 2 seconds here for me to use all the house, so that's all.
Is it green screen?
So how long is this agreement for?
It will be an annual renewal.
We have to renew, we have to renew. Yeah, your successor's the annual renewal.
Well, I know the garbage one is a 10 year.
It's an annual, that's an annual renewal. So what your visuals are providing are 5 years.
5 years.
5 years, something to annual accomplish. Now, that's all the stuff, yeah.
I'm telling you about numbers.
No, I, I have. No, it's about Frank. He can handle.
They want to share with us.
I think that's the main location you try to get it to go to. This is why we are doing the technology.
Can we get fiber, 15 is the first of the line, is it 5 or?
No, it's, it's not the demo, it's me.
I don't, like, 35 or 10?
That was the first thing we knew, they might have, they did. There you go. Contact him. Okay.
Okay, so that's 102, 550.
That's, that's the implementation in the product Excel for the first year, plus we paid 40,000 dollars for the addition of that.
That's 102,000 for the software, the implementation of training, then the annual fee will be 40,000.
Yeah, and then after that.
Is that broken in monthly or is that our initial payment? Or is that a payment?
That is, that's the program build, program design. I mean, that's probably about 40. That's where.
You're only making a big break for our program.
Well. First of all, we weren't, we have, we haven't changed it down. Yeah, I was, you know, first, we, we, what we looked at is what's the cost of top to do this?
Right, yeah.
So basically, I'm like, oh, yeah.
We, we will, our heads are this one for here, I will go to this transition.
Will that hopefully allow to do this more monthly?
Do what?
Will that allow you to do more payments?
We're hoping, yeah, that's the plan, yeah. Hey, I think it's just a better system, it's a bigger system, and so we must let more banks worry about it.
Cause isn't the system we have right now, isn't that, it's not cloud based, like it's.
Well, we have now is cloud based, but it's, it's just not. It used to be a good product and then they settled it out.
I thought the clouds had performed yet, 20 years ago.
Well, it, it transitioned somewhere in those years.
So does that initial fee of the 102, does that include the first year of?
No, it's going to be the additional 40,000.
So is that 40,000 a year, is that, is that right down to a monthly or is that an annual?
It's an annual.
Annual.
And that's not a whole lot of money, we pay now. According to, it's the first year, it's.
Yeah, we're probably about 27.
27.
27, 28, 29, so.
Okay, what's it going to cost, is it going to cost anything getting out of our current software?
No.
Okay, so we can just call them up.
You're really, you'll lose your status as a mere effective controller, association for cloud.
Okay.
Yeah.
We won't be able to afford planes. Uh, this guy, I don't know if he, he.
Motion by David, this is second by Keith, I'll call the role, David.
Yay.
Keith.
Yay.
Bubba.
Hey.
Rexson.
Yay.
John.
Yay.
Motion passed 22.
I'm going to present the data. All right, item number 11. Let's get some of that reviews on all the financials.
Okay, um, 80. Like 5 financials, counting up.
So, were you able to determine how much we're making the sales tax?
Not yet, no.
Why not?
We're, uh. Closing people up, we're reading all, all the budget projections, um, probably will, uh, if anything, we should be favoring the city slightly with the revenue, where they expenditure, with less than projected, revenue is just a little bit over what was projected. I got a note, anything? Should have the May financials ready for it in the near future, get this out. I don't think, maybe a credit will need it, uh, sales tax at 4 for May. Yeah. One month ago, uh, I think.
We're at the end of Christmas.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're going to consider our budget projection on sales tax by a little bit, use taxes down, I think we go to budget and use tax. But all total taxes were about 1.98 or 2% above, um, last year. Budget projections.
Uh, did you ever figure out like how, like with the brand code, loading the industry, did you figure out how much that impacted the sales tax?
Have, have, I don't think. Uh, I, I can, I can look and see what they average.
I'm just curious, and we kind of talked about that last time.
It was about the same amount as what was sort of strong.
Cause then that's shocking, so basically, anything now.
We have to go to the quarter, what are you writing about? Send it back.
City manager's update, we offender a fleet with the street projects, uh, they did, they took a boom right with the weather, they came in and kicked everything out, rocking and rolling. Uh, we're a bit ahead of schedule, we had some issues, where residents weren't notified, their third form contractor, they didn't notify us, so. We started working faster than the notifiers were notifying. So, uh, we reached out to people, apologized, and we didn't really get the same, so, uh, but as much as I had that done, the sidewalk project, the bid for that should be published on Monday at 16, we should have funds, plans on that to share. Uh, it's going to be exciting to get the sidewalk started, hopefully everything is completed during the summer and a good time for us, cause it will start in July, so it will be for the next year's budget. I wanted to speak that particularly, uh, as I mentioned, I've been gone last week with the National Guard, I'll be on this next week. Um, so it's nice sitting here in every mission tonight. Uh, the village library, Abby Brunn, she asked me to share, uh, how we enjoy the library, but we're hearing visitors talk about how they love the library and they love the village. Hosted nearly 70 kids in their summer scavenger hunt, uh, the newest addition, the children's weekly programming, Todd's Thursday, they've been in incredible additions with 30 plus attendees. It's 63 attendees to the summer reading kickoff and starting summer reading, they've doubled their program attendance, we've got horse side LMC, education station visitor library each week. And during the first angry heart program, should have been all 7, we had 7 floors, 10, this fun kids rock. I, uh, put the village arts association on there, this past 2 months, they come on to tell you something and I did not reach out to them to ask them for a hundred four members, I'm going to give them this one. Uh, the parking over reports were uploaded today. Breathing scan over. Please, are currently hiring any dispatcher for the dispatcher position?
Dispatches, we have.
So. Uh, since we had 565 traffic stops, 260 citations, 112 hazardous, 150 non-hazardous. One thing PD is starting to do is on their social media pages, they're shitting some of their stops.
Let you say the city of our horace coast.
No.
Yeah, I'm in the picture, if you're, if you're in police, Facebook, I don't know, Facebook, I guess, they, Twitter, so. There's really neat things in here, if we get, um, Officer Green stopped someone and he noticed something that said he might have to check out someone that this guy had worn. He had an AR, his, his, his vehicle, and he got a whole bunch of bad things that could have been going on, he had, he had to just move. You know, he found that, he found that down, there was, he went through cars, I remember that a couple times, we were talking about a guy was walking, two cars running in front of the doors up. By looking at that picture, when he was out troubling, he noticed this guy had a very same stuff on, he stopped him and that guy admitted to it, that he did. But I mean, it's, it's just, it's one of our options and just thinking and, you know, putting two, two together instead of going, it's so hard, you know, I'm just going back, you know, I gotta get to the next color or something. He's happened to be serving this, and then, you know, that, that was the guy, he admitted, so that, that was really interesting, so. There's really so many things on there, you know, that, I'll make a comment on all of it, too, that just, you know, some of the places you're interfacing and interacting with some of the community, the communities, some kids, groups and stuff like that, that's really, really. And like I said before, it's more than, and I'm not trying to always notice, it's more than just put a uniform out and go, put one on and go out and stall and speed. If you'll notice, I don't think, and I can't, so I can go back to that, is it a 50 50, there are 50 citations and there are 50, is it about a 50 50 split on citations?
Right, normal lines and then tickets.
We do, we do, so, I mean, I get, I get so tired of people, and I had, I had commented on one of our coworkers up here, that, you know, go through the village and it's a speed trap, you know, I've been on this board for 40, for 20 years and I have not stayed the worst, I've stayed in 60 quarter. And now it's, it's below 50, so they're actual, they're actual tickets, so, you know, that's, that's kind of silly to ever bring that up anymore. If you just do a little investigation, you can see, you know, the guys are out there talking to people and, you know, they're, they're being, uh, they're being, you know, village appropriate, they're being village pro village, and they're being active also, and they have to be active, so. It's not just one size fits all, you know, you speak, you speak, we're going to get you, it's, okay, this, this and this, I'm going to issue a warning, if you please, just watch out, you know. Does that do for your community, it's fantastic, you know, it brings all kinds of pro talk instead of go through the village and, and get a ticket. So anyway, just, I'll always be aware of that, and when people are talking, they said, go through this, this is all, always on the, on our website, you know. Go through there, look at some of this stuff, if you're ever in question, you know, because they really do take care of us and they do some things that people don't even notice. We get to read the daily, the daily reports on what happened at night and fore. And it's really interesting, I, I like it because it lets us know what's going on in the village, where do we have cars being broken into, where do we have, so if you have to go out on this, is somebody else having this, that or the other? And you can always visit, you know, with some of the officers, and they'll tell you some areas that they go and watch more than others. They see how many, how many, uh, blocks are getting some cars broken into consistently, and they'll put some watch on that, you know, so it's a, it's kind of a village that's together more than I ever seen it. And it's because of the hiring, it's because of the education these guys get, and it's because of, it's, it's because of the team, it's because of the chief and assistant chief. These guys have leadership roles that are great, you know, they just, it's, again, it's just not putting on a badge and going, going good emotion. These guys are always doing something for the community, which, which is in the last 10 years, is even better than certainly. So, and, and this goes, I'm not just pulling out just this part, this goes for the fire department too. Those guys, you know, they have 500 classes, it'll be 500 hour classes, stuff like that, they train on everything, um, and so, you know, and you feel real good that our guys know what they're doing, qualified, they've got training, they've got great education. So, you know, for the village, I just want everybody to understand that it's a really well managed group, our main spokes are great, you know, they, they jump right in when they have to, do something that's probably our home city, but they'll go in and make a rescue or something on the street for a while, welcome city history, they do the things that help us all out. So just keep that in mind, just do street work, pass them by and say thank you for your, for all the things you do, you know, and to the policeman, they give you an ice cream cone, you know, some. And for a fireman, you know, I just a lot of cigarette pour. But anyway, that's life, so.
What about those?
Road enforcement, stand there and approve.
Okay, and what is the product on 94 14 Nichols Road?
94 14 Nichols Road was an addition to a commercial property. It was about a little over 1800 square foot to the back end of it, to the east side.
Oh, damn. What is issues in concern, see to zoning a church?
Um, there is a church that wants to use, um, a commercial space and there's an issue with the code, and they're looking at doing a, uh, rezone for that. What's that?
Is that all happening?
No. It's on May.
Thank you. Sergeant Lawd, who has to, uh, National State Maritime Security Division, so he is the first member of our fire department, is that the? Sergeant Mothruck has, who's a national state mayor, that's a certification, so he is the first member of our fire department, has that's the area.
Look at those pictures on training, on both, those slots there, wanted to see a bunch of kids with a fire truck, giving you soup under dogs, or. In fact, if they're, I guess, they're, wanted to do some training, go spend a thing, there's just so much going on, I mean, obviously, I do, you know, so.
Chief Brigan has completed the Oklahoma Executive Fire Officer Class, and he recognized the evening of the twelfth at the graduation ceremony in Spook, so pretty proud to improve that. We have more updates and issues or concerns. And working on the, uh, communication system that we're ready to implement in the city. The splash pad is open, and. They have a couple puddles over the ends of our parking area, Jeremy came to the service assessment, that turned a little bit more project than we thought it would, but P D, very happy, this is now a very smooth drive and access to park on, so we're thankful for our guys doing that, uh, we're gonna improve that, get that done, it's a good chance we're bringing a contractor. There's a police park, that's all repairs, so.
Oh, I see.
It started small, and now, uh, well, we did this, we got this, put speed cushions back in, uh, from the new streets, and installed a world bachelor bike school.
Where were those, were those on, uh?
I don't know what street that was, where they listed it, it was once they took off, it was three years.
Yeah. Probably Ohio, yeah.
So, any of your questions, and any city turkeys comments, those are your, please.
Thank you.
Got anything?
Come on, yeah. She got it.
I don't really have anything nice. Uh, other than, I hope the, uh, the fire, police department do their stop all game, you can see it.
Is that in the summary?
Yeah. All right, any council member comments?
I have, uh, one or two, and I just want to clarify, Dave, I think I misunderstood, when you were saying weather impeded some of the, the, uh, street work. And in my mind, I heard you say it's all done, but I'm sure, I was wrong in hearing what I heard.
We're not a hundred percent complete, but as a majority, we're getting close.
Okay.
They're, they're expecting it done by the.
Cause we've got more weather this year. Yeah, so it might, we might get it done by October. Oh, no. No, I didn't, weather's good, but, okay, that was one thing, thank you, you're welcome. Um, I was at an ACOG, uh, best meeting earlier today, and a couple things that I thought were quite interesting. They, uh, they're, they're developing their nine one one vision and strategic plan for improved operations, and then right along with that development of a nine one one ACOG regionalization strategy to enhance the efficiency of the E C Cs, which is what, when the call comes in. And I believe there's like twelve or fourteen of them around the city, uh, I, I'm not really showing that number, but, but, uh, I mean, nine one one came into effect in the seventies, I believe. And, uh, most people don't know, but it's, it's within, within the major metropolitan area, there are actually two nine one one systems that work so smoothly together that you don't know, but. Oklahoma City wanted to do its own, and then, so they were the donut hole, if you will, and then the rest of all the suburban communities joined up through ACOG, and, uh. Did, did, it's basically the same thing, but for everybody else, uh, I will say ACOG is quicker than Oklahoma City was on the completion of the initiation of it, but they've worked well for years, but now they're starting to talk about, with advancements in technology and advancements in the development of programs and whatnot, there probably won't be a need for that many. And then the question's gonna come in the regionalization, uh, that's another way of saying they're gonna reduce the number of them, but, uh, they're, they're somewhat, they're, uh, they're ways away from it, but, uh, um, they're, now they're talking, now they're talking about it. And, uh, and of course, that could open the door to a lot of other regionalization, um, activities that, that cities do on their own now, but if they were to blend together. Uh, the second thing they, uh, talked about that I thought would probably be of interest, uh, it's kind of a neat thing. We had, at ACOG, had, um, looked into developing a, a compo, this first one was a U S D A composting and food waste reduction grant, that they're now starting the second year, I think it's a four year program. To, to, uh, do a better job with our, our trash and whatnot, and, and this would have to do with, with composting in, in those areas. And really, nobody's been doing that, and, and, uh, the, uh, the Oklahoma State Environmental, whatever the equivalent, what is the environment, it's not the environmental protection, it's.
Somebody keep, part of the ground, environmental.
Call them. They, according to our executive director, were pleasantly surprised that somebody was willing to consider taking the lead on doing something like that, and have, have been encouraging and supporting the, uh, our, the financial side of, of assessing it all and, and starting a program. Uh, and they're hoping it might become the model program for the state of Oklahoma, and they're actually talking to us, we, ACOG is technically a, a five county region, although we, we stretch a little, if, if communities call and ask us about the possibility of, of joining us. Uh, we have done a, a couple that are outside of the, the county, uh, lines, but, but they, but they're close enough, and they're really a part of the metropolitan area, but anyway, they're talking about moving it to, the, the state guys want to do it as a eight county thing, which is all the major metropolitan area of Oklahoma City. And, uh, it, it, it could put us into the position of being the leader as we are with the nine one one system, um, and for those of you that, I, I said this before, I didn't say it eloquently then, or may not now. Um, we have advanced in the, the development of the system, they call it, um, uh, the next generation, uh, system is what they're calling, and, and that's at a national level, and we have, we have started it to where they, we're, we're either on center, or we can get within, like, six feet of, if somebody were to call on the phone and say, I've got an emergency. They, within this whole area, they can get that close to, to where the call came from, and, uh, pinpoint it, and then, I, were you?
I was ten feet, but it's pretty good.
Ten feet, okay, yeah, yeah, and they can ident, differentiate between a drive and a court and a place in, in terms of s- street banks, so that that's no longer confusing for the people that are outgoing, and, and the call comes in, and they get it addressed, and people start moving towards the emergency, not having the full information of. Totally where it is, and totally what the issue is, and then these, these, uh, the people that receive the call, that say, talk with the person, they can keep getting more and more information out to them, so that when they arrive, they're, they're, they, they know what's going on, and, uh, it's, so it, it's, it's, uh, it's a neat thing for this, this association of central Oklahoma governments, is what, uh, ACOG stands for, or is the acronym. And, uh, um, they're, they're working to the future and looking to develop, um, I, from our perspective, we're saying opportunities, but gaps in services to, to the, the general public, and, and seeing if it might be something that would fit into the abilities of, of the association of central Oklahoma governments, and, and we were talking about that today as a part of our budgeting, because, uh, um. Because as you look to the future, we're talking about how we're gonna fund this, and how, you know, how will we do it, and, but, we're getting ready to do it on multiple different areas. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Did, was all the rain and everything, did we have any particular drainage problems, or channel problems, or anything like that?
We got a little rain, I don't think we had anything major.
Sounds good. Here's an answer question I had, I was looking at, again, some Facebook things, you can show it, one of our manual covers, it's letting over, going into our channel, I've never seen that before, but I was wondering if that was something just.
Haven't had a handle. We have a lot on business drive, and they, they have, they put good manual lids on there, they kind of pop up a little bit, and you just get so much.
Right.
Stormwater comes into that, so if you, if you're seeing something, a manual generally is, it's stormwater, it's.
That's a lot better than in the seventies, when you had big rains like that, you had cars flooding down the channel, I don't think anybody remembers that. Got that, got that on film, so, which is really interesting, I'm just going a long way.
I've got several drainage projects, this is now used as a last box, yeah.
Okay, so we've, we've managed all the floods, all the, all the rain well, and, you know, we drive around in different areas, I don't see that you can stand water.
Cut the Kevin, really, exactly, if you can say anything.
Good. Well, that's great. It's really, okay, my pass. Your turn.
I'm good thinking.
I don't have to think.
Yeah, I did. I don't have anything. Uh, any news?
Yes, sir.
All right. Oh, do you, okay, do we have, uh, do you have changed work, or did you, did something get changed at work?
I didn't, no.
Do we, uh, we are able to go ahead and take that, or? Yeah, we don't, so, um, if you can forward that to him in the future, so we can.
Our associate was making plug for the Village Arts Association. That was all I wanted to say.
That's tagline.
And all I wanted to say is they're having a concert, there's two bands gonna play, it's on the, I think, the twenty seventh of Friday, if you're happy as you're as yours, John, I'll be, I love you.
Are you using recorded music still?
I, I was so impressed, and we had a very special, I mean, I don't think they plug their blog, but.
They do it on Facebook, so.
But if you're not on Facebook, then a lot of people may not.
I know they have an announcement on Facebook for the ball festival, I just don't remember the date, so.
It's October the twenty seventh.
October eleventh, yeah, I remember that now, I'm, I hear that again. Um, so, thank you. All right. Um, is this related to anything on the agenda?
No, we can do business, okay.
Uh, the, we can only do new business that involves the council itself, um, if there's anything that you.
I'll leave you some of that.
Yeah, if, if, if there's anything you want to bring to an agenda, I don't think you can, you know, Dave, because that's.
I've already talked today, but I don't want to talk to everybody at the doors.
Um, with that, I think we are adjourned. Let's go.